Just give me a thumbs up when you want me to start.
It was, we were literally in the middle of it.
It just went.
He's talking, asking a question of, or Derek.
Thank you. I will call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. First order of business is, we had our executive session. Next is return to public session. And I have pledge allegiance to the flag. So if you can stand up, if you're able, and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is Lord and stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone have anything they wish to talk about that is not on tonight's agenda? And seeing no. Discussion, discussion from school community members. Anyone have anything that they wish to bring up? That's pretty cool. Works for me. Nate, I will turn it over to you, my friend.
We got my computer to load real quick. Okay. So starting off with the MEK, it was toward the end of the first full week of the school and testing everyone's stamina. Our students appear happy in learning the routines while playing and learning, and it's a great start to the year. For the MKG, we are certainly settling into the building and our classroom rituals and routines. We are learning so much about our students, likes, dislikes, how they like to spend their time outside of school, as well as creating a baseline with our beginning of the year assessments. We are in the process of planning our field trips and enrichment for each grade. Many of our students are engaging in Quick writes, and it is fun to read students' perspectives on a given picture. Open house is scheduled for Thursday, September 29th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We hope to see all the families. And then for the Nichols Middle School, Nichols Middle School intramurals and sports are underway. Ms. White is running our after-school intramurals, which is held on Monday and Wednesdays after school. On Monday, students play flag football, and on Wednesday, students play volleyball. And anyone interested could sign up under the Middleborough Athletics webpage. Also, the Builders Club has already had its first meeting, and they will be meeting again on September 27th. Currently, the Nichols Middle School PTA had its first meeting, and they currently need a treasurer. The next PTA meeting will be on Monday, October 3rd at 6:00 p.m. And now for the MHS, congratulations to the class of 2023 officers for planning a wonderful senior sunrise on last Thursday's morning. It was so awesome to see all the seniors celebrating a beautiful sunrise and a great start to the school year. Thank you to all the fall athletes for your commitment to the orange and black, a great start for the seasons for all the teams. Construction has begun on Wood Streets, so we recommend looking for an alternative route to the schools. We are very excited to bring back a long tradition at MHS with the celebration of our Advanced Placement Program. The AP Kickoff Rally will be held for all of our students taking the AP course this year on Friday, September 16th at 9:00 a.m. in the auditorium. And then a job well done to all the students and teachers for a very successful open house yesterday on the 14th. The class 2023, there's a college planning night, September 28th at 6:00 p.m. And then finally, late buses are back, and will run Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays of each week.
Any questions for Nathan?
Do you think the late buses actually leave the school? Do you know, Mr. Brown?
They usually leave between, well, from the high school, somewhere between like 3:30 and 3:45.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Nate. I'm going to take the agenda out of order just a little bit. Because we have some people here today, and I thought we'd take up, we have an action item on our agenda for the MEA contract. For those at home, MEA stands for Middleborough Education Association, and that's the contract between the school committee and the teachers' union. I do want to say a couple of things. First and foremost, I will tell you, I want to thank the administration. Having the opportunity to meet with the principals to discuss the contract that runs their everyday life is, I think, fundamentally important. In the end, my name's on the contract, but the principals have to live that contract every day. So I'm extraordinarily thankful for them, for their input, and for their ability to have conversations with me about what they'd like to see and what they'd like to do. I do want to thank our team. It started with Greg Stevens, who was a member of the school committee. I want to thank Heidi LaTender for attending all the meetings. I want to thank the former superintendent, Brian Lynch, for his input. I do want to thank Sarah for, as our business manager, for her help and insights. I want to thank Carolyn Lyons, who was a member at the beginning and transitioned into the role of superintendent. I do want to thank Meg, who's not here, who jumped in after Greg had left. And I also want to thank Bob Noons. One of the things that we do different in most towns is that we, I've invited the businessman, the town manager, to be a member of my negotiating team. Bob passed this time, but Bob and I met frequently to make sure that what we're offering people are the same as what the town is offering people, because I think that's important. And most importantly, I want to thank the MEA for being a partner and not an opponent at the bargaining table. In my opinion, a good negotiation involves a willingness to discuss issues, come to agreement, and create better space. That does not happen when you start with wish lists, but truly begin when you start with realistic opportunities for change. And I always felt that they started at the very beginning with those opportunities for change. So I want to thank all of you. So the community understands, I want to outline what I consider the highlights of the contract. First, each year of the contract is a 2.5% pay raise over the next three years. This is the same that has been negotiated with all unions in Middleborough. There's lots of language changes to bring it up to date. There is changes to the grievance procedure, including a new form. There is change in course reimbursement. There is a brand-new table of the workday, and as part of that table, it allows us to take one of our current programs called the Futures Program and start and end at a different time during the day that makes sense for the students in that program. There's allowance of the district to use technology as a resource. Their scheduling of IEP time is, I think, far better. There's the development of a professional development council. There's updated changes to leave of absences reflecting laws and changes. It adds more time to high school and middle school counselors. It changes the stipend positions, and it also updates the harassment policy. So I guess with that, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the new contract. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Discussion. So open it up to members if they have particular questions or comments. Mr. Oak.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a comment, I guess. More for, I think, the public's benefit. As you know, since you've been sitting here for a little bit, we just exited the executive session, and we got to ask a million and one questions about the contract and all of that. And it sounds like the chair did a great job at representing our committee, and it also sounds like the MEA did a great job of representing their membership. All in all, I think I was very happy with the give and the take that seemed to happen in the contract. And it seemed like there were some things that make us more competitive in some respects compared to other districts. So I just want to thank everyone involved and say that I support the contract.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would also add that, as mentioned at our last meeting, because it happened right before the last meeting, the MEA overwhelmingly approved this contract. So did anyone from the audience have a comment or question they'd like to bring up? Seeing no one. Just so the community knows, this process started probably last November when I met with the union presidents and the negotiating chair, and we sort of set up the parameters. We attended some training sessions, and we've been negotiating in earnest since January. So this has been not, I wouldn't say a long process. I think if you look at the numbers, the numbers of meetings we met was pretty much about the same as we met last time. We just had different people on our side coming in and out at various times because of changes in the board and changes at the superintendent level. But I do want to, I don't want to thank anybody. Did you have anything you'd like to say, Carol?
No, I just, you know, really want to stress that this was a collaborative effort. I'm thankful for the relationship that, you know, the MEA shares with administration and the school committee. I think this document is a product of that collaboration. I think it's a document everyone can feel proud of. And I look forward to getting to work. The MEA leadership and I have already started our meetings, and, you know, we're well on our way.
Thank you. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. And now I'll turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Young, members of the school committee. I have a couple of topics that I will be talking about tonight. Here we go. I'm just going to advance those slides. Tonight, I want to give you a brief update on hiring, just so you could know where we stand, what positions we're still looking to fill. I wanted to again talk about transportation as we navigate this transition. I have members with me tonight to talk about our summer programs. In addition, our Middleborough High School summer programs, and then lastly, some discussion about audits. So with that, I'll go right into the hiring update. I am proud to tell you that we are in the home stretch and nearly fully staffed. I am proud to tell you that we are in the home stretch and nearly fully staffed, which talking to other superintendents in other communities is something that is not happening everywhere. That said, we do have some positions that are still available, and we're still in the process of identifying appropriate candidates. That includes two categories, special education positions and food services positions. So I listed them here. We're looking for an elementary special education support specialist, which I realize is a mouthful. What that ultimately is, is a coaching position, to assist our teachers, our special education teachers. We're looking for a halftime school psychologist at the secondary level, a first-grade special education teacher, a special education language-based teacher at the middle school level, and additional educational support personnel. Those are what we call our ESPs, which are commonly called paraprofessionals. In the food services department, we're looking for a full-time cook at the high school and a part-time cook at the Berkland. So that is your update on hiring. Any questions in terms of this process, or what is outstanding?
I just wanted to ask if you had any theories as to why we were doing better hiring-wise than surrounding, or than other districts?
Well, aside from the fact that Middleborough is a great place to work?
Of course.
That's a great question. I mean, honestly, I do think that the, that the quality of the people in this community draws people. I do believe that. I do happen to think that's true. And, you know, I think that early postings, I think there was a huge effort by your leadership team this summer to fill those positions. There was a very concerted effort, really started by Superintendent Lynch in May. So I do think that had a huge impact this particular summer. And I think that we are retaining staff. So one of the reasons you can fill positions is because you don't have as many to fill. So I heard some pretty horror stories, bad horror stories from other communities about how much staff they weren't able to fill, or how many staff they were, they were losing. And there's fluctuation every year, but I, from what I can tell, Middleborough got out of that sort of this last cycle relatively unscathed, and I think that says something about this community and this organization. So that's my theory.
Thanks.
Sure. Any other questions on hiring? Okay. Then with that, I'll move on to transportation. I want to start, by the way, I started last meeting, which is to thank our families for their continued patience. It is, I know that we still have improvements to make. What I want to share tonight is that ultimately, your leadership team is not going to stop communicating and is not going to stop meeting until we get it right. So there was a meeting just last Friday, there is another meeting scheduled for tomorrow. These meetings have involved Five Star Bus, our building principals, our Director of Business and Finance, and me as well. So there are many minds kind of wrapping our, our brains around how to solve some of the problems that we're facing, and I would share with the community that not every problem that we're facing is brand-new either. So yes, there are certainly issues that we need to fix right now, but some of the problems we're trying to remedy also existed with the previous transportation company. So there's, you know, a wide variety of what we're dealing with. I included some of the topics of what we've been talking about, because I think it's important for the community to understand, communication is absolutely our top priority, and it continues to be the thing we're continuing to talk about. It's very important that families know when buses are going to be late. It's important that families know where their children are. So we are aware of this, we are working. It is my hope that we're seeing improvement. I was speaking with the principals earlier today, and there is the belief that there is some improvement, but truthfully, still more improvement to go. We've also talked about adjusting bus routes and schedules. This is particularly tricky with the topography of Middleborough, especially when you're navigating a large school bus. The simple truth is there are some streets that cannot make a turn, depending on where you live here in town, or you live in a bordering town without an opportunity for a turnaround. These are situations that present particular difficulties. Add to that, we have a lot of kindergarten students who warrant additional attention in transportation. They are our youngest riders. So this is ongoing. This week, we saw a new system used in our transfer buses, a roster system, to try to have greater clarity on students who are transferring off of a bus at the complex and getting onto a different bus at the complex, which is a daunting task for any kindergarten-age student. We're also managing family requests, and we're getting a wide variety of requests. So I'll be talking about that in a, in a later slide. I know that Brent Caddio is communicating with families, Sarah Hickey has been influential in communicating with families, I have continued to communicate with families. And what I'll say is, we are absolutely going to continue to listen to our families and try to solve those problems as they come up. And then notification of changes. I mean, that's really, I think, a thing that most parents are concerned about if the, if the drivers, if we are short drivers on a given day, and it's going to impact routes. Our families truly need to know that, so that they can make plans for later in the day, or even in the morning. So what we did last week was come up with a communication plan that involves Five Star Bus, all of our buildings and families, so that we are able to push out notifications as families have received in the past, so that you could get a text, hey, your bus is running 15 minutes late today, or whatever it might be. So we're going to see that come online, and hopefully is happening as we speak. Well, not exactly as we speak, but, you know, with each school day. Five Star Bus also talked to us about two prospects I wanted to share tonight. One is an updated map software that they anticipate coming online in October. So the best way I can describe this is that instead of looking at streets that appear as lines on a map, they'll have greater clarity of what it looks like from that street's perspective. Think of the difference between looking at a regular map and looking at Google Images. That's the best analogy I can give the community, but this should increase our route efficiency and deepen the understanding that Five Star has while creating those routes. So that's anticipated in October. And then additionally, Five Star Bus is anticipating launching an application for all families that ultimately uses geofencing, and will, if the family downloads the app, they'll be able to get in-the-moment notifications, your bus is approaching in the next three minutes, or whatever it may have you. This is new software and is still being trialed in other communities, but the anticipation is that this will be online this, sometime this winter, if not sooner. What I will say about that, as much as I'm excited about that, is that sometimes it's wiser to let those bugs get worked out before we're asking families to download an app. That app is only helpful if it's accurate. So I have a natural concern about that, because I don't want it to be wrong, but I'm excited to give that, that notification to parents right in the palms of their hands. So that's what I have for the most recent updates. There were two other pieces I wanted to share with the community tonight, and in the slide after this, I included two webpages, but I appreciate if you're watching at home, or even here in the audience, you can't click on those, so I took the liberty of doing that in the next, in the next slide. So the first thing I wanted to show everybody is the Five Star Bus webpage, which looks like this. So you'll be able to log on, and if you look, you see that red box at the corner, at the very bottom of that screen. What that box says, I know that's very difficult text to read from here. It says, "Submit a bus stop change request issue with a bu," or issue with a bus stop. Okay? So that bring, if you click on that, let me go back, if you click on that red box, it brings you to this. Oh, you're right, Sean. Sean did, pardon me, Sean did add the red box. So you can't, it won't be red on your screen, it'll be turquoise, but if you click on that left-hand side box, thanks, Sean, it'll bring you to this form. And what this form is, is a form for families to go and say, hey, I have a concern, and I'm looking for a change with my bus stop. This could be a range of reasons of why you might fill this out. What's important for families to understand is, filling out this form does not guarantee that you're going to get that change. What this form does is signals communication to Five Star Bus. In speaking with Mr. Caddio, what's going to happen with this form is it's going to be double-reviewed by administration in your building and also by Five Star Bus. We're doing that so that, one, you have the benefit of the greatest amount of knowledge. Five Star Bus doesn't know everything we know, we don't know everything Five Star Bus knows, right? So by having both groups look at the request, we're going to do our very best to solve those problems. And it kind of depends on what their request is, but I wanted to point that out to families. The families I've spoken to, I know there's been some frustration, when I have this problem, how can you help me solve it? I highly recommend this form, I think it'll help, and it'll give you a place to express what's going on, because the other thing I've learned is that a lot of these transportation issues are hard to explain. It takes a while to understand exactly what the issue is. So hopefully, this is a new improvement that will, that will assist our families. So with that, any questions that you have about transportation?
Where can they find that?
Oh, I'll go back, it's on this website. Let me see. Just, so if you go to this, actually, if you, I can even bring you to the link, that top blue link, fivestarbus.com is the website, and then in this slide deck, I linked in the actual request form, but if you go to the website, why is it not clicking now? There we go.
Perfect.
This is what the website looks like, that bottom left-hand box, which has a red box that was added. If you click on that box, it'll bring you to this form.
Perfect.
Okay? So that would be a great, I'll actually talk with Sean after this meeting about putting that on our website, just so that it's more easily accessible for families. Okay, other questions?
Late notification communication. I know a lot of parents are frustrated with it. Is there any way to ensure when those notifications come out that they're in a timely fashion? Because a lot of times, we're receiving that information after our children are already due to arrive at the bus stop, so it doesn't help to say, the bus is 30 minutes late, when they're already, you've been waiting there. So I think that's a huge issue with the parents and why they're frustrated, is because they're receiving these late notifications too late, so it creates a whole logistical nightmare for them.
Yeah, your point is, your point is, excuse me, I said yeah, I meant yes. Your, your point is well noted. We're pushing out, our communication is instantaneous, the system that we use is pretty much one button. We can push that notification out as early as we get it. So I'll continue to speak with Five Star about the importance of conveying that information, and Sean, I see Sean wanting to talk about our communication system as well. So Sean, why don't you, Sean Cecilianno, why don't you talk to us?
So just to, just to kind of address the communication, so right now, we're using another, a different system, where hopefully in the next week, fingers crossed, going to switch over to a new system called Class Tag. Class Tag is very much more mobile-friendly, parents will be able to download an app. It's coming, I promise, we're working on it, we just want to make sure we get it right before we have everyone download and do it. It'll allow for notifications right to the application, it'll allow to, bus three parents will get a notification that it's happening. It also allows administrators to be on their phone, outside, waiting for kids to get on the bus, and be able to push a template that says, buses are currently running late, and there's going to be a blank spot, and they can put 10 minutes. Send it, and it's going to go to all their families. So that's something that we are working on, getting it right, and making sure that our data is correct before we do this and we make the move. Right now, we're using Blackboard, which is what we've always communicated with families with, but this new platform will really allow us to be able to kind of hit our families where they are, on that mobile phone, getting a push application, getting a text message, and allowing families to be able to get it however they prefer it, and in whatever language they prefer as well.
No, thank you, it sounds perfect.
Go ahead.
So I have two questions, and the second one depends on the first, so, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I'll ask a follow-up after this, but first of all, just to, I'll do the sandwich approach. Great news on the new tech that's coming for, you know, where is the bus? That sounds like it'll be really helpful once it's, you know, tested and all that. What would you say the split of responsibility is for this, and, sorry, also, knowing that some of these issues existed with our last bus company as well, would you say that the, there is some, some part of the district's responsibility for, for this, and some part of the bus companies, or is it really just something happened on the bus company's side, and we're just trying to do our best to facilitate a fix?
Are you asking about the routes?
Did we do something wrong, is what I mean, the district?
The route efficiency for that? Well, I mean, it, don't get me wrong, there's all, we're the district, so there's always, for me, I always feel we're accountable. That said, we're not, we don't do the bus routes.
Right.
So, yeah, do I think communication could be better? Of course, I always think we can do better than what we did yesterday. That's just the way I think, right? And so until every family is satisfied, I'm not going to be satisfied. So yes, of course, I always think that we could do better, but it has been difficult, because unlike most problems that occur in the district, we have very good control over what happens next, and in this case, because it's bendered out, there isn't a lot of control. What I can do is prompt greater communication. So as an example, we have some kindergarten riders who go to, actually, it's not just kindergarten, we have elementary riders who go to not their home in Middleborough, either in the afternoon, or are picked up there in like a daycare-style setting, right? And the information that we provided is through an import through Aspen, but the transport company wouldn't have that, because those plans aren't known until the children start school. So what we did was we provided that information, so that they have a rundown of which rider, where are they going, and why are they going to a location that's not their home. So that's one of the ways we can improve the communication, but hard to kind of have before the school year begins and when families have their plans made up. So the short answer is yes, I always think we can do better, but a little bit difficult, because in this case, we don't provide the service.
Fair. And so the, the follow-up question to that is, knowing what we know now, is there any way that we might be able to see any of this coming the next time we vet bus companies for, for a contract?
Yes, absolutely. I will tell you, it's been a very rich learning experience for me personally. There are a lot of things I would do differently now, up to and including a checkout process of routes at the end of each school year. Chairman Young and I spoke about this in one of our earlier meetings, and I do think that there are steps we can take, whether it's Five Star Bus next school year, or some other company down the road. For me, I think there should be some type of end, how you end the year, where you're providing a library of information before the new school year begins, so I am confident that will improve.
Awesome.
Sure.
Obviously not pleasant for, for everyone right now, but it's encouraging to hear that we, we have gained something as a district by unfortunately going through this, so thank you. That's great.
Absolutely.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Superintendent Lyons, as you mentioned, you can only send a notification when you know there's information to send. So because of the program that Sean spoke about trying to get online soon, and, but knowing the geolocation of the buses isn't happening until later, what's the process for note, notifying a notification needs to be sent? Because I'm assuming the bus drivers can do it, but if you're driving your route and you're paying attention to the kids, then keeping track of exactly when you need to say, oh, this isn't just one minute late, now it's seven minutes late, how, is it just on the bus driver? Is there another process for making sure that the notification can go out?
Sure, that's Five Star Bus headquarters, which is here in Middleborough. That's really where that notification comes from. The drivers are driving, so they're certainly not on their phones, and yes, they have radios, and they do have communications. I know there was a tower issue here in town that impacted radios, I think the fire department was experiencing that problem. So did our, so did our bus company. So once the communications issues are cleared up, and I believe that they are cleared up now, this was like last week, on one day last week, I want to say, the communication should be a lot quicker. But what I'll say is, you know, Brent now has additional assistance in the office as well, which has been, which has made a difference. He's not just one sole person in the office trying to manage these issues, and volume is volume. We've spoken with him, though, at length about the importance of early notification, because he doesn't have the capacity to do mass notification to our families, that is definitely us. So the sooner we know, and the more efficient Sean can make our communication system, the better.
But is it, the bus driver gets on the radio and says, hey, we got stuck at a, you know, behind a, a construction vehicle, and we're now five minutes behind, the, do they have, does the bus driver have to relay it through the radio to the main office, or is there some other tracking form where there's a notification that they can then pass along to you?
Yeah, I mean, I still think there's a bit of like that teleph, it also depends on what the delay is. Sometimes the delay has occurred at our building, right? So if the, if the delay is because of us, we certainly have that information in lifetime. That's a lot easier, we're not waiting on communication. But if the driver is on the road and the route has changed between yesterday and today, we are beholden to that driver communicating to someone, so that we can communicate it out. But it's a good question, because I know all the buses are GPS, GPS-equipped. So it's something that I can speak with Mr. Caddio about, is there a more efficient way to get that information in lifetime? And maybe with that app, that would change things.
I'm assuming that's what's coming with the new stuff. I think it was more the understanding that what is going to be implemented soon is the, the intermediary, and that it's still reliant on a notification. I know on some of the Facebook pages, parents will post. I know on some of the Facebook pages, parents will post like, hey, bus is 20 minutes late. And other parents who are on that route might pick up on it. So maybe it's one of the things where people can be aware, maybe a phone call to the school to say, you know, if they haven't gotten the notification and the bus is 20 minutes late, maybe a parent could call the school instead of posting it on the app. And then the notification could go out kind of thing. So just doing the best that the community can to help with the notification. Because at a certain point, the bus driver's responsibility is the safety of the, the students on the bus. And, you know, if something's going on and they don't get to notify somebody that they're 10 minutes late because they're dealing with an issue on the bus, I'd rather they dealt with the issue on the bus than notify people they're 10 minutes late.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, the faster we get information, the faster it can go out. So, you know, I do, I certainly don't want to put more pressure on those parents at the very first stop, right? That's what we're talking about. It's that parent, that family that's going to know that soonest. But sure, I mean, I, we won't, we don't turn away any communication, any information. And our phones are certainly manned. So absolutely, if there's, if that, if you're, if you have such an inclination, we would certainly welcome that community effort, particularly while, while we work out the kinks. You know, I asked the principals just today, you know, it's now, we've had pretty much regular meetings every week, if not sooner, you know, in shorter duration. And I asked our, is it, tell me the truth, is it getting better? Is it getting worse or is it staying the same? And there was universal agreement that we are improving. So I'm confident that with each passing day, we are getting more efficient and we are learning more. So my hope is that I don't have to send out those notifications very often at all. I'd rather the buses be on time and, you know, kids are returning their families as they should be.
Well, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay. With that, I'll move on to the next item, which is the summer programs update. And I'll ask Dr. Terry Markalitis to come forward, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and share with us how the summer went. And also Principal Paul Branigan, he'll be reporting out on the Middleborough High School Summer Programs as well.
Hi, everyone. How are you? Nice to see you all. Paul and I are going to discuss the summer programming that took place in Middleborough just a couple of months ago. It seems like much longer than that, but. I'm going to start with the summer curriculum work that we did. We had over 40 teachers working this summer on curriculum. And I really want to outline what we did because their work has been really remarkable and got us off to a very good start this year. Some of the things that we worked on were vertical articulation of Algebra I curriculum between eighth and ninth grade. This was an area where we knew there were some gaps and we closed them with this work. And we cannot wait to see this come to fruition and our students really being able to hit the ground running in ninth grade. We worked on scope and sequencing of our new health curriculum resources in grades six through 12. We had talked to you about that health curriculum last year. And this was really the teachers working to make sure it was implemented. The foundational literacy, scope and sequence development for primary grades has been a critical part of the work that took place this summer. We wanted to ensure that our students had a very sound foundational literacy, scope and sequence that all of our teachers could follow and prepared them for reading and writing. We've also had some discussion at these meetings about how the district has struggled with writing. So to that end, over the summer, some of our English teachers and some of our elementary teachers got together and created writing prompts and rubrics for benchmark assessments for grades one through eight. I am so excited about this process to begin. I think it's really going to help us improve our writing across the district. We worked to create reading mini lessons that are aligned with the Massachusetts frameworks. So while we have been using the Leslie resources, the literacy collaborative resources, they've not always been completely aligned with the state frameworks. So we solidified those connections over the summer. We worked on developing some units for the high school in ELA, math, science and social studies. We had a couple of humanities teachers, English and social studies work on some interdisciplinary work. We also had the Russian and the French teacher work on course development that is aligned with the new standards that just came out. And then the very last thing that we spent some time on this summer is the freshman academy, which I asked Mr. Branigan to speak to.
Thank you, Dr. Markalitis. We're really excited that we have had a freshman academy for some time and that I had come before the committee a while ago, talking about a lot of the work in our revisions and really doing some work in regards of redesign and a reboot of really what the freshman academy is. So this summer, because of the support of the district, we were able to bring a team of teachers together for the summer. We were able to engage them in some professional development, training through the May Institute, which looking, which is looking at PBIS strategies for high school. And that what we did is we took some of those tenants of really, how do you work on behavior? And how do you work on really creating a kind of a culture in a room? That we ended up designing our, and freshman academy. And the reasoning for it is, as you know, the research shows that the more of a stronger start that freshmen have in starting their journey of high school, the more successful they will be. And so we know the fact that the more we could be creating a uniformity, a, a playing field across every single ninth grade classroom. So no matter when these ninth graders are walking into the room, there were some common themes that happen more in just the way the teacher engaged the class in the structure of how to break down a 90 minute period. And so what came out of it were two documents that the teachers all have electronically, but they also are getting graphics of them that will go up into their, into the rooms. And one is really helping them do school again. What does it mean to be a high school student? And what does it look like in a classroom? And there was this rubric that the team created that really looks at how do you become a persistent student and a respectful one and have initiative in the classroom? How to become dependable to yourself, but also to others? And then also really creating an environment in the room that is going to be positive and supportive to others. And really the teachers will work with that to really use it as an opportunity to say, you know, what we're really kind of focusing on, say dependability. You did this project and it was awesome of how well you all worked together as a group. The other one is really helping all of the teachers be able to chunk a block. As you know, they're 86 minute periods. And for a ninth grader coming in, that's a huge shift from what their past experiences have been. And so to take that 90 minutes and to be able to show them in a graphic of really, there are four real major tenants of the lesson. It goes from the opening, it goes to the lesson itself, to the activity to back it up, and then the closing or the wrap up that will happen. And so just some of the vocabulary that our teachers will be using. It is the goal, the fact that for all of those ninth graders, no matter where they go, it'll allow for them to build some capacity and consistency in their own strength of becoming that ninth grader. So really proud of actually the work that was done this summer. And I thank you to the district for allowing that to happen. What's really nice is, is that based upon the products that we had created, the team was like, I don't think this is just for ninth graders. It could actually be things, just, it's really good to have in a classroom. So there, the graphics that are being created are going to go in every classroom in the building, which we're kind of excited by. So just a thanks to the district for that.
Does anybody have any questions about that? We're going to move on to some lighter material from here. So I want to talk to you a little bit about Summer Splash, which was very successful. We served over 193 students. 20 different classes were offered. We had over 20 teachers and educational support professionals who taught classes and facilitated activities. And I do want to give a shout out to our coordinators, Jen Gorman and Emma Delvecchio, who are teachers at HBB. This was their first year coordinating this program and they were phenomenal. They did such a wonderful job, so thank you to them. And you can see some of our students hard at work there. Really, they're having more fun than work. Great combination of both of those things. Wanted to share with you some feedback from the family surveys about Summer Splash. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but I do want to say like, it was so fun. Thank you. My son had a blast. My daughter loves Summer Splash. I wish it went a bit longer, which we're going to look at next year. This is our second year with Splash and it didn't disappoint. All of these things just made us feel so good about the program that we put together and offered to the students. And we just have a couple of graphs that the coordinators put together to really get, you know, what went well and what can we work on? And you will see that really everything was pretty positive. And this one was really important to us, and so I wanted to highlight it. The question was, my students developed positive relationships with adults and staff members in a safe environment at Summer Splash. What this says to us is that our students were able to work with our teachers and really start to develop relationships both outside of school and then be prepared to see them in school and have those relationships continue. Really great opportunity. And then I would like my student to attend Summer Splash or similar programming in summer 2023. We were pretty excited with this. We are going to definitely look into the very small slice of people who were dissatisfied to determine how we could make it better for them. And then we also wanted to share what the staff had to say, which, you know, the staff, we couldn't have done it without them. So their comments mean the world. They said it was great, super organized and well run. I really enjoyed working with the kids. Maybe next year I'll help out again. Love hearing that. We hope so. Additional feedback would be for family registration to start earlier. And we agree with that. We are hoping to start the registration process in April so that families can be aware of what is being offered. And it will not cut into other things that they plan for the summer because they will know far in advance what is coming. And then this is just from the teachers. Summer Splash provided students with enrichment opportunities and focused on social emotional growth and learning in a safe environment. This is something the state asked us to do with this funding to make sure that there was both an education piece and an enrichment piece. And we really think that we hit the mark with our programming. You know, this was just a little happy moment. Summer Splash administrators communicated effectively and listened to my feedback and questions. I felt heard and valued as an employee. It doesn't get better than that. I'm switching to Nichols Middle School Credit Recovery, which ran from July 5th to August 11th, was coordinated by Scott Redpath. He did a fantastic job. We served over 30 students. We provided support in the areas of ERA, math, science and social studies. Next year, the program will follow the same schedule as the high school and will offer enrichment opportunities as well as credit recovery. It's very hard to have our students come for credit recovery and not have anything fun for them to look forward to as well. So we're hoping to make it a combination.
And just for the high school, we were a pretty busy place this summer. As you know, Mr. Silvia had shared with you all of the summer conditioning programming that happened during the summer months here. But also we ran three programs this summer that I thought was important to share, to build from what Dr. Markalitis had shared throughout the district. The first one was our credit recovery as well. As you know, at the high school, we have our summer school program or our credit recovery program and that we offer through the high school itself, but also through the community evening school as well. So the program that we ran during the day was really a much longer day than what the night school program required students to do. So for our students in the day program, it was credit recovery plus enrichment. We had 17 students who participated. We identified what classes that they needed to get their credit recovery in. And then working with Kylie Bowen, who was the school psychologist here at the high school, was the coordinator of the summer credit recovery program and working with the team of teachers that covered every content area. They were able to really create a full day experience. And I wanted to share with you, not only was it just the recovery of the class that they might have failed or they needed to get the credit back, but it was really about creating an experience. Because we know that so many times that at least at the high school level, that many of our students who engage in credit recovery or have to do summer school sometimes are more of our reluctant learners. And so to really help them be able to build capacity and to build relationships. You'll notice in that slide that the day started off every day with a team meeting. It was called the Start Strong Every Day. Every day was a new day. Movement breaks throughout the day, a 21st century learning experience where they would actually incorporate skills and career opportunities as well and kind of just really give them some real world experience. Very personalized academic support. Every day, the day would end with an attitude of gratitude closing. So it was a way to bring the group together to really help them be able to build the capacity of the relationships. It was a really well attended event. Our big one was really our summer program for the performing arts that was coordinated through Justin Pitzley, who is a music teacher here at the high school. Working with a team of music educators, as you see all of the names that are there, they really created an unbelievable experience for the students in our district, grades five through eight. And what was so cool is to be able to have our younger students be able to be here in the building to utilize the Performing Arts Center for activities in music and in theater. You'll notice in this slide that it uncovered a lot of very small group instruction in theater percussion, strings and wind instruments. But it also had huge of workshops, placements as well, where students were able to engage in theater games and music and movement, world percussion, digital music and so on. And then all of that work that they did during the many weeks that they were here at the high school accumulated into a really a wonderful performance that was done here with all of the students. So just a thank you to all of the people who are a part of the summer program here in the performing arts. You can just see some of the, just the photographs of just some of the activities and the engagement of our, of our younger students. And lastly, I just thought it was important to share with you the last two slides of really how we ended our summer with Start Strong. As you know, our Start Strong is our two day orientation program for the incoming ninth grade. It is run over two days. The first day is an 11 hour day and the second day is a five hour day. It's really helping our incoming ninth graders be able to come settled in their new home. This particular slide is the 200 plus students who served as orientation leaders this summer. And really what's important to note to this, for the school committee, but also for the community as well, that all of the activities, the curriculum, the programming, all of it is created by the students. So they really identify where, what they think our ninth graders need. And then ultimately they begin their planning from there. And then the second slide, in the final one, is just really the second day of the program. So in the first day of the program, that it is really all about becoming a Satchem, where it's the team building, it's making them part of our community. And then the second day is really about the academic piece. It's really their goal setting. It's really, what does it mean to be a high school student? Understanding that in high school, everything counts. And really what does that mean to become the really owner of your own learning? And this is the final part of our day where all of our ninth graders get their Satchem Strong shirts and join the ranks of their orientation leaders. So it was a great way to kind of end the summer months here at the high school. Any questions or anything?
I wondered if, could you talk a little bit about the, I don't know the right word for it, but maybe the success rate of the credit recovery programs? I'm assuming that students have a certain number of credits that they're looking to recover at the beginning. And, you know, how did they, how did we do in getting them there?
Yeah. So we actually, we do well with it, to be honest. Because when the students go into credit recovery, there's a real mission to gain those credits back. That many times for high school, that our students oftentimes don't say technically stay back, but they really become retained because they may not have enough credits to go into the next grade for graduation requirement. But ultimately with the credit recovery program, if they're eligible for summer school or the credit recovery, it allows for them to be able to regain that credit that they lost to put them back in the academic standing. So they could become, say they finished the year not so in a good spot, but by doing the credit recovery program, they're getting themselves back into play again to be able to start the next year as the grade, in the grade they're supposed to be in. And that's really the whole goal of it. Whether it be that they, you know, say they failed a math class and they needed to retake that class again. They could do it during the summer. Or in some cases, it was really helping students kind of put some credits into the tank. So they may have been doing more of an elective than rather than say a core content area of say a math class or their English II class or something like that. But it's allowing them to be able to kind of beef up where they are to give them a better cushion, to make sure they're in a good standing going into the next year. So we really do find that it has worked nicely. What has been even more, I think, powerful, that has been really just a benefit of What has been even more, I think, powerful, that has been really just a benefit of really the way we've been able to design this program with the staffing piece, is it's not just come in, the plug-and-play of doing the course and go home. It's really about making connections with the teachers. It's making, it really about the personalized learning experience for them. And I think that has made all the difference in terms of really how these students are coming in to start and how they're leaving at the end of the summer.
Just ask a follow-up. It sounds like there are a lot of benefits, whether we're talking about the credits themselves or like you just mentioned, all the other added benefits. And I don't necessarily need the number. I was just curious, do we keep data on, you know, if, if, if they are successful in what they were setting out to achieve by the end of it?
Absolutely. So it all depends, if they get their credit back, then we know they're successful because they've been able to reach the threshold and pass the class to move on to the next, to the next course as well.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to this amazing team, you know, and I'm, what I'm talking about is the entire leadership team and then the army of teachers that make this work happen. You know, there's a, so before I go on to that, I just want to specifically call out, you know, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Markalitis, you know, Principal Paul Brandigan, Principal Heidi Latender, you know, the new Director of Special Education, Jennifer Healy. These things don't happen in a vacuum. And what I, what you heard over the last two meetings is what I would call extremely robust summer programming. You heard it from curriculum, special education, elementary level, credit recovery at middle school and high school, a freshman academy, a Start Strong program that is second to none, arts programming. I mean, the opportunities for our families to engage are somewhat limitless here, and that has to do with the intentionality of the planning of the leadership team in this district. And one, I want to say thank you, and two, I'll point out that for a profession that often gets this moniker of being summers off, I would point out and kindly suggest that it's very far from that. Learning is alive and well year-round, and I'm very proud of what this team has put together, and I'm indebted to the teachers who make it happen as well.
Thanks.
Thanks. And thank you, Dr. Markalitis, and thank you, Principal Brandigan. Next, I will turn to the exciting world of audits with Sarah Hickey, the Director of Business and Finance.
Thank you for giggling at all. Chairman Young felt that it was, this was an important topic to put on the agenda. There's, you'll recall, of course, there's not one tonight, but frequently you'll see in the school committee packets, there will be warrants to approve. And, you know, we, you know that we bring money in. I've talked to you a lot about grants. You know that we spend a lot of money. You've seen the warrants go out. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the auditing process. And there are really three parts to the audit process. I compile in the month of September and October, I compile an end-of-year report for the state, which is literally every single penny we spend during the fiscal year and categorize it all and break it down and for the Department of Education. So that end-of-year report is audited by an independent auditor. So every school district in Massachusetts is required to, within nine months of the end of the fiscal year, to have an independent audit done of the end-of-year report. So that is something that I will send out to the auditors, usually around December. We work on it January, February, March. It's due back to the Department of Education. The, the audit report is due back to the Department of Education in March. So, you know, there's oversight on everything that I do from an independent auditor. The second audit is the general audit of the municipal finance records. So Middleborough, the town of Middleborough, was required to have an audit and by an independent public accounting firm, and there are compliance requirements. There's a, a list of everything the auditors have to look at for the town. I also have a compliance requirement for the audit of the end-of-year report. And so because we're a department of the town, there will be things that the auditors ask for from me in order to satisfy the town audit. And then the, so that town audit usually happens May, June, July, in August, the auditors start working on what's called the single audit. So the single audit is required whenever you receive federal funds and spend federal funds in excess of $750,000. What the auditor has told me in the past is what they do when they do the single audit for the town is they randomly select two accounts. Now, I studied probability and statistics. I will tell you, every single year I've been here, they have chosen our Individuals with Disabilities Educational Act. So the probability of five years in a row, selecting the same account over and over again is fairly small, but they tell me it's random, so I'll smile and give them the data. So, so that single audit, and it's an audit of the town, is, consists of two parts. They audit all of the financial statements for the grants and then all of the, the federal award programs. So that, we just finished the single audit. The report will be coming to the town for that over the next couple of days. And, and that's the exciting world of audits. Any questions?
So I, I bring it up and I ask Sarah to bring it up because I think it's important that you all know and the townspeople know that it is, there's a constant process of town, not only town funds, but school department funds being audited. And they're audited by, in this case, three outside firms, look at three different levels of audit and make recommendations and changes. And over periods in time, I have not really seen a whole lot of issue-oriented pieces in the audits. And so I just wanted people to know about it because I think it's important, much like in the past, and I will continue to do. I'll ask Sarah to speak about our, our accounts, what money we have in outside accounts and things like that, and just so you have a better understanding of what happens and, and sort of, I don't mean this meanly, but the sort of the boring world of, of school finance that people don't see. But I think the important thing is, if you have, if it's done incorrectly, it causes all sorts of problems and red flags are raised here and there, and this is not a place where it's done incorrectly nor are red flags raised. And I think that's important. So thank you for all you do, Sarah, because I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. I just wanted to add on to that, really just for the, the public's benefit, something that doesn't come to the forefront of our meetings too often, but that is very much a part of our school committee services. I don't know if all towns do this, but we always get all the warrants in our Dropbox every meeting, and I find that really interesting. And when I've got an opportunity to go review the warrants, to sign them, that's also really interesting. And I think from a accountability standpoint, there's an incredible amount of review and accountability on the, the business office and the school. So it's, it's been, it feels like we are in very good hands, and there's a lot of eyes on these things. And, and also thanks to Sarah for putting all these processes in place.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What I wanted to say was, perhaps not glamorous, but certainly critical. I want to extend my thanks to, to Sarah Hickey and also the business office staff. You know, the programs that we just talked about have to be funded. So when your business and finance office functions efficiently, we're able to do a lot more. So I would argue that, you know, Sarah is a big part of that. Her team is a big part of that, and we're thankful for that. So yes, perhaps not glamorous, but not insignificant.
Well, and I'm going to add this into our previous conversation about the summer programs. If you remember, I came to you in the spring and said I was applying for a competitive grant. And so there was money in the state for these summer enrichment programs, and our program, we, we described our robust programs to the state, and they awarded us with money to support these programs. So, you know, that, yes, that's part of the work we do, but if we didn't have those great programs put together, they wouldn't have awarded us that.
So with that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the high school building project. There was a meeting yesterday. Do you have anything you want to add? I know we were just, we're still going over.
Um, there's, yeah, I mean, there's not, we're approaching 95% completion in terms of, there's not a lot to update. I know that Jim Hutchinson was on site today with, you know, they're still working on that punch list. We get closer and closer with each passing meeting, and, you know, that's really, that's really all the update there I have.
And just to remind everybody, we are still under budget.
We are extremely under budget. Yes.
Next item on the agenda is just again, a reminder of MASC, MASC Annual Conference in November. Next item is the Consent Agenda, and Rich, I believe you have a question. Go right ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request that we pull an item out of the Consent Agenda, just for a little extra attention. That's item number four, the Walking Toward Hope fundraiser.
Sure. So Chair, entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, item one through three.
So moved.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Discussion. Just so everyone knows, these are fundraisers that we have to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is the fundraiser, the Walk Toward Hope, October 1st, 2022. Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
For the purpose of discussion. Mr. Elk, go right ahead.
For the purpose of discussion, Mr. Chair, could I ask Connor Dragunis and his mom, Leslie, to, to come up and just tell us a little bit about this fundraiser, if you guys don't mind, that they, I understand that they work pretty hard on. I've known Connor for a long time. He's been with Borough Bot since the beginning, and he's a really impressive young man. I appreciate his work on this. I didn't tell him they were going to have to speak.
Mr. Elk does that occasionally.
I, thank you, Rich. I've personally been affected by suicide a lot in my life. I have a lot of different stuff going on in my own life, and I always convince myself that I attract other people who also have stuff going on in their own lives. So I thought me being affected by suicide around different, how can I say it, like, being affected by suicide in different ways, being speaking, I thought that was a thing that was unique to me. But after looking into it a bit, after one that really hit close to our family, we, I found out that actually 80% of Americans have been in some way affected by suicide. And I think that in this school, we should definitely have something to, like, boost up people who are having mental health issues and let them know that they're not alone. And we made a team for a walk that's part of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. We called Walk Toward Hope, and it's a team that we're raising money to, just basically just send along to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and also organize a team to go walking Buzzard Bay on October 1st.
And Connor, if I could ask a question? It's my understanding that the Walk Towards Hope is multiple locations do these walks, and you're just picking the Buzzard Bay location, correct?
So Walk Toward Hope is the name of our team.
Okay.
And it is one of the Out of the Darkness Community Walks.
Out of the Darkness.
Which, you are correct. There are many different community walks. So if you were to look this up on their website, you would find a very large list across the state. And we chose the one on October 1st. It's right in Buzzards Bay. And we would love to have community members join us to walk with us, and we would encourage people to make donations on our page, which we will be able to share some information because if we are allowed to do this fundraiser, and we just really appreciate the support of the community and the school committee. So thank you.
And what is the best way to get in touch with you all through your page?
So I believe, do, right, doing this approval will allow us to put the fundraising flyers together. Would you like to talk about the flyers?
We're basically just asking for permission to advertise it around the school and the, on, basically what we want to share around is a little link to our site that goes to our page, to our specific Walk Toward Hope, which is, as you said, basically a smaller team in the big scheme of Out of the Darkness Community Walks. And if you click on the link that we have available, then it basically just sends you right to us, and it'll have your contact info.
Yes.
And you'll also be able to donate and join the team from that page.
Thanks.
So the flyers have a QR code that is scannable, and we also will have a link available that we can put on social media.
Great.
Awesome.
Okay.
Any other questions? With that, Chair, the motion's on the table in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We approved the action item for the day. The other action item that we have, we have two, sorry, I forgot about the second one, is approval of Mary Kay Elementary School Out of State Field Trip to the Rhode Island Museum of Natural History, Providence, on October 22nd. This requires the vote of the committee because it's an out-of-state field trip. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some more.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And the second is, this is one that we've done usually, but it just got bypassed because we were switching superintendents. There's a motion to, Chair would entertain a motion to approve Carolyn Lyons to the Reed's Board of Directors. And allow me to sign that. Do I have a motion?
Some more.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Again, this is something we do every year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, and I will sign it now. Thank you very much. I would also mention that there are several, in our packets were several PTA fundraisers for Mary Kay Good and the MAC. There's a lengthy list of new hires that the superintendent had talked about previously. And with that, our next meeting is going to be October 6th. That's the first meeting in the month. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Go ahead, a second.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night. All right. Thank you.